Okay, good evening, everyone. It is now six o'clock on October fourteenth. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Sandwich Board of Appeals. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America, to everyone who stands one nation under God, in the name of the Constitution of America.
The Board of Appeals is comprised of five regular members and one alternate member. The Board of Appeals can have up to four alternate members. Any decision of this board requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds of five is four. If only four members vote, vote would have to be unanimous. If five members vote, one member could dissent. This meeting is live and streamed on Sandwich Community Television's website and on local Channel Nine. The meeting is being recorded and will be available on SCTV website at www.sandwichtv.org tomorrow. The Board asks if anyone is recording this meeting, please notify myself. Yes, sir.
I'm going to record.
Name? Abbott?
Yeah.
Could you please provide your name?
Paul Bolton.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-third as written?
I must still approve the amounts of the meeting from the twenty-third as written.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there is no oral business, so we move on to new business. Special apartment number twenty-five dash thirteen, one-ten Country Club Road, appeal of decision of the building commissioner, Miller.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to recuse myself. I was involved as building commissioner when this project started.
Okay. I understand that. All right. The Sandwich Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on the application of Philip Miller applicant in Miller Investments Two LLC property order. An appeal of decision of the building commissioner under UGL Chapter forty-eight, Section eight, for property located at one-ten Country Club Road, Sandwich, Mass., Assessor's map number fourteen, parcel number two-eighty, for the purpose of appealing a written zoning determination relating to Section thirty-seven hundred building site. Public hearing will be held on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at the Sandhill School Community Center, sixteen Dewey Avenue, Sandwich, Mass. at six P.M. Further, particular information can be viewed at the Planning and Development Office. And we have some letters. Here with me. All right, first letter is from Sam Jensen, town engineer. The engineering department has no comment on the subject A, B, C. The health department is in receipt of the request for comments or request for an appeal of decision of building commissioner. The health department has no comment either. That's Heather Galant. Andrew Mandel from the fire department. The fire prevention office has no comment on this property at this time. From the conservation department, Jenna Silver, Assistant Director. The Conservation Commission has reviewed the request for the appeal of the decision of the building commissioner, Miller dash twenty-five thirteen, one-ten Country Club Road, Sandwich, Mass., and this project position in order of conditions on July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and a certificate of compliance on August seventh, two thousand twenty-five by the Conservation Commission. Project was completed in compliance of both the State Wetlands Protection Act and the Town of Sandwich Wetlands Protection Bylaw. Please let me know if you have any further questions. And that's it for comments. Okay. And we will open it up to the applicant's representative, Mr. Corain.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher.
Oh, excuse me, sorry. Pardon me? Yeah, that would be good, huh? Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So, one second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your turn.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant, Miller Investments. Mr. Miller is here with me today. I know that a different attorney's office filed the initial appeal, so if the board needs a verbal authorization from Mr. Miller for me to represent him tonight, then he's certainly, he's here to do that.
Need a verbal authorization from the applicant?
I have to ask Mr. Corain to represent me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, basically, a little bit of history. I know the board has the package of information, so I think they're well familiar with kind of what, what happened here. The applicant was issued a building permit and constructed a single-family home at the, at the address. When it came time to receiving a certificate of occupancy, Building Commissioner Reed determined that there was a zoning violation based on Section thirty-seven hundred of the bylaw. Thirty-seven hundred of the bylaw deals with lots that are lower than the road layout, which requires you, it basically expands the front yard setbacks, so you have to be so many feet. It increases the setback by so many feet for every foot you're below the elevation of the road. So, that bylaw was enacted back in probably, possibly the early nineteen ninety. I think it was ninety-two-ish. The lot itself, as the letter from the prior attorney notes, was created in nineteen seventy-seven. So, it was, it's a validly created lot in nineteen seventy-seven. At that time, this building site bylaw was not in existence. I have, I had as far back as nineteen eighty-six of the zoning bylaws, and thirty-seven hundred is not part of that bylaw either. So, it's clear that this bylaw did not come into effect until the early nineteen nineties. If you look at the current bylaw, it mentions at town meeting, you know, nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-four. But again, nineteen eighty-six, no such bylaw provision. So, I really think that this appeal really boils down to what the board should be guided by are two things. One is your bylaw, which is twenty-five fifty-five, which is cited by the, the prior attorney, which says that any legally created lot that, of at least twenty thousand square feet, which this is, and has at least a frontage of a hundred and twenty-five feet, which this does, which is buildable for single-family use, which this is, and is held in separate ownership, which this has been, shall be buildable for single-family residential use, notwithstanding lack of compliance with the intensity of use. And then of twenty-six hundred. Further, it says, buildings constructed on such lot conform to the setbacks required for the lot when the lot was created. So, again, the setbacks for when this lot were created do not include thirty-seven hundred. The setback, again, at least in nineteen eighty-six, and I think this would have been in the, probably likely, the R-two zoning district, was, the R-two was fifty feet, the RD was forty, the R-one was thirty. So, whichever residential zoning district this is in, this, this project meets those requirements. So, again, so just given your bylaw, we believe it's a buildable lot, and it doesn't need to meet the requirements as grandfathered. If you look at forty-eight, Section six, which is the zoning enabling statute, which also guides these boards' decisions for grandfathered lots, the tenant of, tenant of zoning, it states that any increase in area frontage with yard or depth requirements of zoning ordinance or bylaw shall not apply to a lot for single and two-family residential use, which at the time of recording or endorsement, which again, this would have been back in nineteen seventy-seven, was not held in common ownership, which this wasn't, conforms to that existing requirements, and had at least less than the proposed requirement, but at least five thousand square feet and fifty feet of frontage, which this, this does. So, again, any increase in area frontage with yard, which this is, this is increasing the front yard setback, shall not apply to a lot for single and two-family residents. So, again, I think if you look at your bylaw, if you look at forty-eight, Section six, I think it's pretty clear that this, this property is exempt from the requirements of thirty-seven hundred, and that it would only need, need to meet the setback requirements that were in existence when the lot was created in nineteen seventy-seven. So, I, I think that's all that really needs to be argued on this point. However, there is, you know, a secondary argument, which was made by Ruben Rudman, regarding the, where the measurement was taken from. So, this is kind of a unique lot, where if you look at, I think it was tab A, I'm sorry. One of the, the plans that was submitted, which shows where the distance was taken from, it's not there, exhibit A, I think it is exhibit A. Yep. If you go to exhibit A. No, that's not the one from the letter. I'm just looking for the as-built. Oh, exhibit C, I'm sorry. See if you have exhibit, again, exhibit C. I think it went by. It has the red comment, yep, right there, thank you. So, I don't know if it's easy, if I can stand, if that's okay. So, when the engineer did the as-built plan to determine where the setback line, they did it from this area, where this diagonal line. And the reason they did that is because technically, the front of the house is here. It's not here, because my client doesn't own any of this land. He has an easement that was, as part of the, the lot approval, has an easement to access the property here. So, his lot only touches the road here. That's why the engineer drew that line from there, because from our perspective, technically, this is the center of the house. This is not the center of the house. Because again, none of this touches the road. So, again, it's a secondary argument. That's how the engineer measured that. I think there's a difference of opinion with the, the building commissioner on where that measurement should have come from. But again, the bylaw isn't, you know, necessarily clear on that point. And again, the engineer, who was hired, did it that way. But again, I don't think that that's really what makes or breaks this case. It's really the bylaw in forty-eight, Section six, which again, states that we're protected. It's a protected lot, it's a grandfathered lot. We don't have to meet the requirements of thirty-seven hundred, because this lot predates thirty-seven hundred, which, you know, came into effect in the early nineteen nineties. So, you know, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think it really, that's what it boils down to. You know, that the law's protected, it's grandfathered, you know, it's, you know, something that we see all the time with lots that were created, and we have zoning changes, and that's exactly what happened here. You know, we had a bylaw that was in existence prior to, that just said, these are your front yard setbacks. And then what happened in nineteen ninety said, you know what, if you're, if you're below the, the road layout, then now you have to have an increased front yard setback. So, it's an increase in the front yard setback, and it's protected under both your bylaw and under forty-eight, Section six. My guess is, I don't know the history of the bylaw, why it came into effect, I'm guessing if you know, like Oldham Circle, you know, where those lots are, you know, a hundred feet below the road layout, you know, for safety and, and issues like that, that is probably why this bylaw was enacted. But we don't have that situation here. This, this lot really isn't that far below the road layout. But again, you know, we're looking at a situation where the lot predates zoning, and it's for single-family use, in my opinion, and it's that it's protected.
Okay. Open up to the board for any questions or?
So, Mr. Corain, the grandfather argument aside, wouldn't this issue have come up during the building permitting process at some point?
Well, I think it was raised. I know that, Brenda, there are emails that are in your package that suggest that there, you know, was compliance necessary for thirty-seven hundred. I wasn't involved in the process, I don't know what the back and forth was, whether there was pushback that, no, it doesn't apply, yes, it does, no, it doesn't. But I know it was raised at one point. They did, you know, they went, they applied it, you know, whether they applied it rightly or wrongly, you know, that's, you know, to be determined. But, you know, looking at it now, where now they're creating a zoning violation, I'm here to make an argument that, you know, it, you know, it's protected, and we shouldn't have, you know, it shouldn't, doesn't apply in this particular case. Irrespective.
Typically, and Ian can correct me if I'm wrong, once the foundation is installed, a certified plot plan is produced to the town.
Right.
Which typically indicates compliance with zoning and setbacks. So, at the time that was submitted, was there any question about whether it was in compliance? Are you aware of any, any instance? I mean, I know this predates, I think, when you were here.
Yeah.
But the fact is, I mean, today, if this issue were to come up, you would receive a plot plan, and you would be able to look at it and say, you know, the compliance, you can't continue to build.
So, we would receive the plot plan, and only we receive it when the foundation is built, and they can't go above the foundation until, so we wouldn't have the floor level until then, that, that, that would be today, so we may request, you know.
Wait, so this particular issue should have been addressed at that time, would it, would it not have been?
As I say, I wasn't around.
No, I understand, but I'm saying, at this point.
There is a request for an elevation cert in the permit, the issued permit, so that probably was when it would have been addressed, there would be an elevation. But I think with the documentation, that it was well aware to the applicant that this was, that this was required.
And, and so, to, to speak to Attorney Corain's issue with the grandfathering, do you find, do you believe it does apply?
The way I read it, it doesn't apply, because the setbacks don't change in twenty-six hundred, because of, this is an elevation requirement. So, as it states, it says, if you meet that elevation, then the setbacks don't change. So, the setbacks are there if you, if you do what's required by thirty-seven ten. And it was amended after.
But it is a bylaw that directly affects setbacks, that was not in place at the time this lot was created, correct?
The twenty, the thirty-seven ten. Yeah, it was amended out afterwards as well, so I would have imagined there would have been some discussion about changing if it did affect it, but my reading of it is that it, it was a separate, it dealt with elevations rather than setbacks.
Because there are other bylaws that, that might come along that could, that would be exempt, I mean, a lot is pre-existing non-conforming.
Right.
And there are other bylaws that could come along affecting all manner of things.
Right.
That would be, allow that lot to be built on according to the rules and time at that place, in, in place at that time.
Yeah, you could see setbacks for wetlands and things like that that may come later that, you know, we would argue would exempt. You know, I would just, I would disagree with, with Commissioner Reed on the point that it's an elevation bylaw. It's not an elevation bylaw. The elevation may affect it, but it's really a setback. It's a front yard setback. You have to move the house back further based on what that elevation is. So, you know, I really do see this as a yard issue and a yard setback that is generally exempt from increases, as opposed to an elevation. It's not talking about how high the building can be built. It's really, it just, the elevation just simply affects how far back you can be.
So, if this lot was to comply with thirty-seven ten, how much further back from the road would, would it have had been built, in your opinion?
In my opinion, if they'd met the requirements of thirty-seven, then they could have met the requirements of the setbacks of twenty-six one, as simple as that. So, if they met that elevation, that was recommended on their plot plan, they could have met it. It was, it's quite easy to make it, and I think Attorney Douglas makes that argument, that, he makes a statement here, if anyone had identified the front end of this modest grading adjustment, it might be prudent to satisfy a variable setback formula tied to relevant elevations, that work could have been done readily and inexpensively as part of the.
But currently, the way the home sits now, the structure is, what, how much further back would it have to be to comply with that?
I believe it's, again, this, I'm not a registered landsaver, so that's what I've been requesting, as you see from the documentation, I haven't got it yet. But my reading of it, would it would have to be elevated four or five feet to meet the?
Okay, so, but it's not elevated?
Yeah.
So, as elevation now, how much further back would it have to be?
I believe it's about another sixty feet.
Sixty feet?
Yeah.
So, and I don't think, is there room for any of those? Because I know they encroached the wetlands.
Oh, I think that lot pretty much drops pretty significantly the further back you get.
And then you just exacerbate the problem, once you keep moving the lot, the home back, you can add elevation, so it'll be virtually impossible.
That's just, as I said, I've been requesting a registered landsaver to make, to give the last conversation I had with Mr. Miller was presenting a registered landsaver that shows all these setbacks, shows all these elevations, which I've been requesting numerous times, the whole way through this process, and I haven't got yet. So, I just did, with the information I had, I just did the best I could with it, so I wouldn't quote my, my calculations as such, but.
I understand, I was an engineer in Ireland, but it's a little different, I'm not a registered landsaver.
But I think, I think Ian's probably right. I mean, it's probably, based on what the elevation is, where the first floor level is, we're probably sixty feet short of where it needs to be.
Yeah.
And raising it, you can't raise the house now. I mean, maybe they could have brought Phil in at the time, but, you know, at this point, we're dealing with a, a front yard setback issue, and that's what the violation is.
I'm sorry, you, how long did you, I'm sorry, how far would they have had to raise it to comply?
I think about four or five feet, depending on.
To the first floor elevation?
First floor elevation, yeah.
Okay, which would have put it how high above the ground at that point?
I think it was, it's at ninety-four, I believe, ninety-four point something, so ninety, ninety, ninety-nine point, you know, something like.
Yeah. Okay.
That's going off the hundred and two elevation, which, which I thought, so, again, registered landsaver may present something slightly different, but it's just my rough calculations.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Any of the members of the board have any questions for David Papleton, the attorney? All right, anyone from the public wish to speak to this permit?
I would go.
Name, please, and address?
Paul Bolton. Five people have come late. I'm the butler. Just a couple of things that we've been dealing with for, I don't know, the three or four years that this house has been building. They first started off by clearing the lot in front of my house, in front of their house, the one that you see there that they said that they don't own. That was cleared, I got pictures showing all that. I got a rejected plan that says the pool and shed do not meet minimum setbacks, or neither does the steps on the front porch meet the setbacks. If you go to the corner of the end of the easement, draw that straight line up to my property, the rock wall that they have is actually going into my property, I've brought that up many times. For about the three or four years of construction trucks constantly going back and forth, this, it's, it is destroyed, it's ruined, the easement of the road accessing to their house. They had a, some guy that was working with them took it upon himself for to clear and snowplow, they ruined the sign, and they would shovel, he snowplowed the top of my driveway or the road up by Country Club Road. They constantly park up on top of there, which has led to footpaths and more erosion of my property, while the side of his up on top there, they're just, they don't park up there at all. Then they tried to put a gate on the easement off of their property, just on the easement to not allow anyone to go down there, restricting me from getting to my property above their house, front of the house. So, that's what we've been dealing with. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Phil Miller, the owner. So, I'd like to make some comments regarding Mr. Bolton's comments, so, yeah. First of all, when we built that, you know, we made a significant investment in site improvement, you know, on the order of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in elevation changes and so on. And then in front of conservation, every time we did anything, I called the conservation agent, met with them up onsite, and made sure, I've been in, I've been a builder for forty-five years. I know the rules, and I know how to follow the rules. So, in relationship to that, if I had known at the time of the as-built that my elevation was not in compliance, it would have been easy enough for me to raise a few feet. I'm buying Phil from P.A. Landers down the street, they drop it in one hour, I regrade, do whatever, and I could go on my way. That would have been a hindrance at that point in time. I wasn't trying to skirt any rules or anything like that. In relationship to the comments about my guys' parking, we measured our parking from the center of the road back to the, the setback from the road. We made sure, and my guys, my foreman, made sure and talked to Mr. Bolton that, yes, we were in compliance where we were parking. I built a set of stairs so that my guys could walk down from the street. I went to engineering, I made sure I was in compliance with engineering, they signed off on the stairs. So, I provided a separate access, and, you know, it's, Country Club is a public way, you know, so guys parked in various spots. I'm not denying that I did, the guys didn't park in, in his frontage, but we did not destroy anything there. It was down, you know, there's downed limbs and leaves, it's not a lawn, it's not planted, it's not improved landscaping. Did guys walk up and down at times? Yes, they did. Do I think that we destroyed everything? No. In regards to the easement, the easement was completely closed off with downed trees from the, the neighbor's property, and you, it wasn't passable. I removed all that, it probably cost me about six thousand bucks. There was that much cut-up trees that were blocking the easement from the very beginning of construction. And I took care of it, I said, don't worry, I'll take care of all that mess, and he said, can you leave me some downed trees on the edge to just kind of create a curb? Which I laid them out carefully, and I did. So, I addressed that. I've regraded it. Anything that goes on in relationship to drainage up top, there's drainage that is, I, I don't think it was probably ever permitted, but it's, it's dumped right next to the property line and intrudes on my property. I noted it initially on the walkthrough to the conservation agent when we initially did a walkthrough. So, it's a two, two-foot diameter piece of ABS pipe, it's, that's in front of Mr. Bolton's property there, and drains out, you know, down towards the conservation area. And I do, I don't think that it's filtered, I don't think it's, you know, a normal kind of drainage structure that you would normally see. It's just somebody ran it, it's out to grade, whatever it is. I haven't bothered about that, and so on and so forth. I did note it initially on the walkthrough with the conservation agent. I've tried to be a good neighbor, I've been respectful, my guys have been respectful. Construction is construction, it takes trucks to go in and out, that's our access, and we did the best we could with that. So, regarding the as-built, I was issued, you know, I was, you know, I was issued a compliance, and I was allowed to, you know, I've had frame inspections, I've had every type of inspection out there on every single thing, I've had the surveys, I've had the setbacks, I've had multiple surveys on the pool, the shed, everything I've done. And I've been certified with a stamped plan that I'm in compliance. And so, I mean, a stamp is a stamp, right? You know, I'm not an engineer either, but the stamp tells me that I've had a professional out there, and what I, what I've put forth is something that's in compliance, and I believe that I am. So, I think that addresses, you know, a number of those things. I mean, I certainly wouldn't, you know, didn't desire to be here at the end of a long project, where I want to move my family into the house, and I've been, you know, not able to do that for quite a long period of time. So, you know, the meter runs while I sit, and I'm just asking for, you know, a reasonable conclusion to this.
Any other questions from any of us? Oh, excuse me, yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Paul Harrison, I live at one-oh-two Country Club, right at Hawk Pond and Country Club Road. I wasn't going to speak, but hearing the comment that I tried to be a good neighbor kind of forced me to say something. I think all of us that live in that area, we're, we're kind of in, in orphaned land, I think, once we were going to be part of the Ridge Club, and now we're not, so the town doesn't take care of our roads, and, you know, we kind of own it. But the last few years, it's been total disruption, total disregard for the people that live there. Our property has been driven on by the trucks, we had the sign to Little Hawk Pond taken down, we had our mailbox taken down.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to interrupt, but it seems like we're really far-fetched of what we're here today.
We didn't interrupt you, sir. And I think that, you know, you may say that's all irrelevant, but it isn't, because there are other issues that Paul has mentioned that come up with the zoning laws. This is a builder that should check these things, if there's any ambiguity, should get sign off before the work is done. And I just think the whole project has been handled with total disrespect for the four or five of us that live in that area, it's destroyed our property, and it's destroyed Little Hawk Pond Road. I mean, that road is pretty much impassable now with, with rain. As I understand it, the Massachusetts law says that it As I understand it, the Massachusetts law says that if the builder will not remedy it, the town has to remedy it. I don't think the town wants to do that. So I, I just think it needs to go on record that this project was not handled the correct way. There was no reaching out by the builder to the neighbor saying, we're coming in to build this company. We know this house is, we know this is our room, you know? We'll try to do it in a way that doesn't disturb you. If it disturbs you, let us know and we'll try to do better. There was nothing of that. There was no outreach. There was no anything. So I, I just think that, you know, it has to be on record that this was not handled the correct way and that there was total disregard for those of us that live there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Crane, do you want, wish to say something else?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Again, I'm not here to diminish what the neighbors have felt or what they're saying. I mean, it's, we're here narrowly focused on the issue of the zoning violation, whether it's a zoning violation or not. And again, I think the law is pretty clear on that and that's really what you have to go by. That it's, you know, it's protected under 48, section six, and it's protected under the local bylaw. You know, I would ask, you know, if the board were to uphold Ann's decision, you know, we'd have to either appeal that to the courts or go to, you know, have to go for a variance. You know, so I, I'd like to ask the board two things. One, if I could take their temperature and if they were inclined to uphold Mr. Reed's decision, then I would ask that maybe you consider asking town council for an opinion.
Well, there's your wrap. We, we went to town council a couple of weeks ago. I asked Leah to check with Amy and we got a response back, but she's looking for some additional information before she can, before she wants to respond to it.
Okay.
So that's your wrap.
Correct, yes. Town council's looking for, nothing was provided to prove that you meet the requirements of section 2555. There was no deed research or title of research in with the application that shows they never merged at any point. And then she felt comfortable to move forward and give her interpretation as to how that actually interacts with 3710 building siding.
Okay. So what I'm going to recommend is that we continue until we get, you get the information to Amy. Amy responds. We have time to look at it. So I'm, I think we should just continue this permit until the 28th of October.
So just so clear, we're looking at the chain of title for 2550 to determine. Okay, so we, we don't know what, if it was held in common ownership with our lots?
Yes, it was part of the bylaw. That's the only thing. It says it has to have been held in separate ownership from all adjoining property, but no title research was done.
So wouldn't that something that would have to be produced before a building permit is issued? That they would have to be able to demonstrate that it passed 2550?
Yeah, it depends on, I'm looking at it at the time.
Because I know we've been down the road before where people went in for building permit and they couldn't get one because of 2550. So why wouldn't that have been established at the time that the building permit was applied for?
I mean, it probably was through the building commissioner's office, but there was nothing on file to show compliance with that. I know they go back and do the title research. Usually the assistant does for every building permit comes in to make sure we don't have a merger issue.
All right, well, I still think we should get something in writing on, in that regard. Get a response from town council and we'll move on from there.
I'm happy to provide any information that town council requests. I mean, if she has a list of things that she's looking for to check the boxes, I'm happy to provide that. The only thing is, I would ask, I'm out of town on the 28th. I don't know when your next meeting after that might be.
Yeah.
We're going to have scheduling conflicts up until December then.
It's going to go to December.
Well, let's put it on for the 28th and I'll confer with my client as how best to have representation for him at the meeting.
Okay, so can I get a motion to continue? Special permit number 2513 to the October 28th meeting of the Sandwich Board of Appeals.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
All right, the next, next on the agenda is special permit request number 25-14, 51 Dillingham Avenue, special permit. I'd like to just let everybody clear out. Okay, the Sandwich Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on the application of Thomas Cullenade, applicant and Thomas and Christine Cullenade property orders for a special permit pursuant to sections 1330 and 2420 of the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaws for property located at 51 Dillingham Avenue, Sandwich, Mass. Assessor's map number 88, parcel number 133, for the purpose of expanding a non-conforming structure over 30%. The public hearing will be held on October 14th, 2025, at the Sands Hill School Community Center, 16 Dewey Avenue, Sandwich, Mass. at 6:00 PM. The public record can be viewed at the Planning and Development Office.
Motion to open 2514?
Second.
All in favor? All right, comment letters, bear with me. First comment letter is from Ian Reed, building commissioner. On 9/23/25, an application was made for a special permit under the Town of Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaws, section 2420 change, extension, or alteration for a property at 51 Dillingham Ave. Property is located in an R1 district on a 5,000 square foot lot with 50 feet of frontage. Current footprint is 480 square feet. The applicant has proposed an addition of 425 square feet for a total footprint of 905 square feet, a percentage increase of 47%. The proposed addition will encroach a further four feet on the eastly side of the lot for a setback of 6.1 feet and will encroach further three feet on the westerly side of the lot for a setback of 12.8 feet. Any alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change to a single family home increasing non-conforming nature by 30% or more requires a special permit. From Sam Jensen, town engineer. The site is, is up slope of stormwater treatment facilities that help protect water quality for shell fishing and swimming in the nearby waters. These stormwater treatment facilities are vulnerable to clogging and degradation by silt and sediment that can flow from inadequately controlled construction sites. It is recommended that any approval of the subject be conditioned to require implementation of erosion and sedimentation controls and property management of these until final site stabilization is achieved. Let's see, from the Public Health Department, Heather Galon. The Health Department would like to have the applicant submit a current Title V inspection to demonstrate that the existing septic system is functioning properly. The addition cannot exceed the design capacity of the existing septic system or there would have to be a new septic system permit applied for that is designed for the total number of bedrooms per Title V that is to be in the structure. The addition cannot block access to or cover any components of the septic system. It may be necessary to install an impervious barrier between the proposed addition and the existing septic system, depending on the setbacks of the addition to the septic system components. The Conservation Commission, the Conservation Commission comments for 25-14, 51 Dillingham Avenue, Sandwich, Mass. It appears this project is not within the jurisdiction of the commission under the Whitlins Protection Act and the Town of Sandwich Whitlins bylaws. The Sandwich Fire Department, Andrew Mandel, the Sandwich Fire Department has no comment at this time. And that's it for comment letters. Okay, can I have a motion to open or did we do that already?
You can do it again if you like.
Sure.
Getting old. Okay. Ian or Ian, any comments from either of you?
Straightforward application increases non-conforming nature of the structure by footprint by 47%. That does not include adding massing going up, but it's pretty modest. Fits the setbacks from when the lot was created.
And Ian, we read your comment. Do you have anything for the other side? All right, the applicant, Tom, you're, you're up.
Great, thank you. My name is Thomas Cullenade and together with my wife Christine, we're the owners of 51 Dillingham Ave. I'm here tonight to respectfully request a special permit under section 1330 and 2420 of the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaws to allow an addition that increase the size of our pre-existing, non-conforming home by more than 30%. Our property lies in the R1 residential district area in the town neck area on a 5,000 square, square foot lot with 50 feet of frontage, which makes it substantially, substantially smaller than today's zoning standards. The home was built in 1957 and is originally, and is one of the original cottages on Dillingham Ave. This project is motivated by genuine and practical accessible needs for my wife. My wife Christine has limited mobility and currently, and the current layout of our home forces her to climb stairs each day, which has been increasingly difficult. Our intention is not to expand for luxury, but to create a first floor master bedroom and a fully accessible bathroom so she can live safely and comfortable on a single level floor. Because our lot is narrow and pre-existing non-conforming, meaning the current 10-foot setbacks required by the zoning is not feasible. To accommodate the designs, the plans propose a 6.1-foot setback on the eastly side of the property, allowing an adequate space for accessible bathroom. It's also important to note that under the previous Sandwich zoning bylaws back in November 2017, lots with frontage of 100 feet or less like ours were allowed, were allowed side yard setbacks of six feet and eight feet on the other side. That rule changed in 2021. When the bylaws were updated to require 10 feet on both sides, our home was originally compliant with earliest standards and request simply seeks to continue using those long-established guidelines that we see throughout the town neck area. When we begin this process, several contractors advise us tear down the existing structure and start over. However, my wife and I could not bring ourselves to do that. This is a home filled with tradition, with deep values and charm and character. That's why our design has been restricted and limited in working carefully to preserve the architect feel of the original cottage while making it safe, functional, and accessible for my wife. Limitations. All departments have received the application express either support or neutral feedback. The town planner and the building commissioner confirm that the project qualifies for a special permit under section 2420. The Board of Health requests verification of the septic capacity or raised no major objections. The Conservation Commission confirmed that the project is outside of the jurisdiction. Then Engineering Department recommended only standard erosion, stormwater controls during construction. And the Fire Department had no concerns. In summary, this project represents a thoughtful, compassionate, accessible addition to a small legal non-conforming property. We are maintaining the architectural integrity of the neighborhood and we are addressing a very real mobility issue. This modest addition will have no impact on the butters and the character of the town neck area. It will allow me and my wife to remain safe in our home for years to come. On a personal note, navigating the permit process for projects like this has been challenging and I completely understand why. It is a complex process meant to provide both homeowners and the community. I want to sincerely thank Maureen McCabe and Steve Tucker from the Planning Department Office for the guidance, patience, and kindness throughout this process. Without their help, I would have not been able to appear adequate for this meeting. I also want to thank Ian, the building commissioner, for being so responsive to our calls and questions. Their professionalism and support have made a real difference. I respectfully ask the board to approve this special permit, allow us to forward and allow us to move forward with the necessity heartfelt accessory, accessible additions so we can call Sandwich our home for years. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any member of the board have any questions for the applicant?
No.
Yes.
I just didn't see the, the proposed lot coverage. It does note seven says max lot coverage is 25%, which we know the existing is 20.5. But I'm just wondering, did I miss what the proposed lot coverage would be?
That, you're talking about on the site survey right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the lot coverage is, it's under 25%. I believe that's the requirement.
That is the requirement. I'm just wondering what the proposed is.
And the proposal is 20.5.
Okay. So it says existing is 20.5.
You're increasing it by 47%, correct?
Yes. Existing, maximum lot coverage is 25%. Existing is 20.5. So I'm at 25%.
So you're, you're proposing 25%?
Yes, I'm right at 25.
Okay, it's just that if the existing is 20%, 20.5%?
It's, a second floor is being put up. That's why the square footage is. So the footprint down below, which is the coverage of the lot, is, is minimal.
Okay, I'm just looking at that plot plan though. It shows, see, this, this plot plan is very confusing because it doesn't show the existing. It just shows what they call the proposed remodel. I've actually never seen that before. So it's kind of hard to really figure it out.
Yeah, I did provide, if you go into some of the files, it should, it should say the proposed. Do have that for you too.
It does show up there, maximum lot coverage 25%.
Yeah.
I mean, I would agree. I had a hard time. I was trying to figure it out myself. I couldn't for the life of me figure out what the coverage. Basically, square, square feet of hard, impervious surface.
Yeah. The driveway is shell, the, the, most of the structure around the property are all kind of, there's no heart. There's not the driveway, you know, where it's, so most of it's all shells. Yeah, see, see the driveways, all shells, cobblestones.
That's existing.
Yeah, that's existing. And that's going to stay that way. We're not going to pave any driveways or increase the.
The, um, sorry. Brandon, I'm stealing your thunder. Any other questions? I, I think that was.
That's pretty much it. One thing I was going to mention, just, it's got nothing to do with us, but to be cautious of. This plot plan shows, I assume, the foundation at 6.1 feet. The setback is, as you said, six feet, but the setback is taken from the farthest out projection and it does look like you've got a pretty substantial overhang. So just something to keep in mind when the time comes for, for your own, then you could talk to Ian. He'd probably screw you up a little bit on that.
We, I think we've discussed that.
I just, the only question I had was on the lot coverage. It says the existing is 20. It tells us that the maximum lot coverage is 25, which we know. And I'm just not understanding what the proposed lot coverage is.
The only other question that jumped out to me was this proposed outdoor kitchen and then the pergola. I, and maybe it's a look back to what the, what the old setback was, but I believe we need 25 feet right on the backyard. And would that be from the edge of pergola, which? I don't know. I, I would agree. I'm having a hard time with Brandon. I was just concerned that I think we're.
Yeah, I think that, I think that the plot plan should show existing proposed, existing setbacks, whatever they are, and it should show the pergola as well. It looks like the pergola is going to go right over the septic, but maybe that's going to change.
I guess that goes in, like, is that a hard surface where the kitchen is?
No, it is not. And that, that's a wish list. My main focus is the addition for my wife. You know, we would like to do the outside kitchen, but that's not the focus. And if, if we need to, to, to change the pergola to an open floor plan, that's fine. But I don't want the pergola or the kitchen to slow down or deteriorate from what I'm trying to do for the addition.
Yeah, I don't know.
So it should start with lot coverage or setback?
Both, yeah, both. I, I guess it was, lot coverage was very confusing and then it feels like, um, there was a comment from, it was Heather, about access to the tank. It almost appears as though you're building on top. It just starts to go down this road of, okay, well, sounds like there may need to be some clarifications or revisions to.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, we're not, you know, like I said, the addition is my focus, you know, if we need to remove the outdoor kitchen or the patio, I'm fine with that. You know, we're not trying to put any pavers over or cement in the, the, the back out kitchen or any of that. And if we, if the pergola is an issue, we can remove that too.
Yeah, I guess I just, I don't really know. I guess that was my challenge with, forgive me, the, the plan set was it, this was really hard to know if it's an issue or not. You know, that's the part that was challenged.
Looks like you had it on it, you could see this in the plan space in the plan.
Just looks like a regular plan.
What is this? This is like a blank space, it's a plain sheet plate, they cast it off this on top of it.
Huh. Yeah, I don't know, I, personally, and maybe I'm being tough, but I, I think it's worth some clarification. You know, again, if. Revised plan? Yeah, I, I think of, of, like, a true site plan with dimensions and coverage. I think is, is critical.
Okay.
Particularly where it's, you know, again, if we, you know, there's, we certainly, I understand the non-conforming and extensive non-conformance. Looks like we're making potentially some new non-conformities and then possibly exceeding some.
So what is the proposed rear, rear setback right now?
We don't know.
For the side or for the rear?
We don't know.
Forty-point-five.
So forty feet?
Yeah.
Okay, and what's the, and that's the, what's the requirement?
Twenty.
Twenty feet. Okay, so if he can, he can build twenty feet back.
I do there, yeah.
In, by right. Okay, so whether he does that or not, it doesn't matter. And then it comes down to, if you're concerned about lot coverage, if it's going to be pervious, then that doesn't matter either.
Why doesn't it matter?
If it's, if it's pervious material, it's not lot coverage.
Okay.
Not like a, pouring a, a platform, that's still pervious.
I would agree.
Okay.
But I, I don't know, I'm assuming what you would.
So he can build that by right. But it's, it's basically just a, it's a basically a glorified barbecue grill, okay? So what I'm saying is, regardless of what we're, from our perspective on the special permit, the existence or not, or lack of existence of that is immaterial, because he can build that by right any time. Because he's within the rear yard setback, and he's not creating any more pervious surfaces.
How do you know that, how do you know?
Because he's got forty feet, he's got forty.
That forty feet is to your.
Yes, exactly, but he's allowed twenty, so he's got twenty more feet to build back, which means it's a setback.
What's the dimension to the pergola?
I don't know, but I'm just saying.
I don't either.
I thought he could scale if he want, but, you know, he's going to have to build it, he's going to have to build it.
I don't know, man, can you read it? I can't read it.
If it's attached to the house, it would make the same setback as a deck, which would be twenty feet.
So if it's detached.
He's concerned I think it's a lot coverage.
Yeah. Okay, I would agree, but that's not what's proposed.
Okay, well, we're just giving him the, basically the square footage is all we're giving him for the house. We're giving him the increased dimensions of the structure. We're codifying the, the sideline setbacks. That's pretty much it.
So it's fourteen feet from the house, from the new addition, is going to be the outdoor kitchen. So I'm still within the twenty-five feet setback of the rear.
What do you have for the pergola?
Fourteen feet.
Fourteen feet. Oh, so the kitchen's less, oh, okay. Yeah.
One-story structure, it's only a ten-foot setback, it's not attached to the house, it only needs to be ten feet from the rear.
It's not attached.
And I think that will be shown on the, um, building permit application and reviewed at that point. But my only question is regarding the, the lot coverage, and as I said, it's very unusual to see a plan that, that doesn't have the existing on there, and the setbacks of the existing, actually, I've never seen one before. And so, so that would be beneficial to see that and to know what the coverage is going to be.
As far as they had, they do, you had somebody draw it up, right?
Yes, I did, I paid a lot of money for Richard Hood to do it right, I guess.
They always do an existing.
Yeah, he did the Azbilt, so.
You know, Mr. Hood, we've seen it before.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with you, Brian, I, I don't know of a case where we've allowed excess of the coverage, right? I mean, it's worth checking, I, I, I just don't. I couldn't figure it out.
Are you concerned with the lot coverage increase?
Yeah.
From twenty to twenty-five?
I don't know what it is increasing to.
It's, it's, yeah, it's twenty-point-five right now, and it's going to twenty-five.
But it doesn't say that, it says the max is twenty-five.
That's what he's allowed, right?
Yes, we know that.
So it won't exceed that.
All right, so I, I'm.
Usually the proposal's on.
I'm hearing that we'd like to see something that's more exact as a revised plan.
Okay. So is this going to, am I going to have to present in front of you, is this going to be continued, or I'm looking for a vote today?
Based on the fact that, that the Board wants to see a more definitive plan, we're going to have to continue.
And what exactly are you looking for, you're looking for?
Total proposed added square footage of hard surface and total.
Lot coverage.
Total existing.
Okay.
Lot coverage.
Certified on the plan by the Land Chamber.
And you're not happy with Richard Hood's, um, comment number seven? Comment seven, uh, what is it? Comment, yeah, so.
His comment is correct, but it's not accurate.
The bylaw is saying.
Yeah.
He's not saying what the coverage is.
Right.
At least, I, I don't read it, but he's simply stating.
Could we just condition the permit that it can't exceed twenty-five percent?
Or could do that? The condition that would have to be met prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Yeah. Right, simple enough?
So that plot plan will be presented to the Building Department for.
Yeah, I'll have this revised and approved by Ian.
It has to be in compliance.
Sure. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
All right, anybody from the public wish to speak about this, let's put it this way.
I'm, I'm, my father is the abutter, so I'll, I'll be speaking on his big half.
And your name, sir?
My name is William Metcalf. I live at forty-nine Dillingham Ave, be the, be the abutter on the eastern side that wants to be, you know, expanded to point one feet. And I just have a couple of letters here just to make sure that, uh, I'm, you know, I'm representing the owners, even though I'm, I'm not on the deed, you know, I'm, I'm the owner's deal. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna read a statement that I prepared. Well, my name is William Metcalf, and I am one of the abutters on the eastern side of fifty-one Dillingham Avenue. As well-meaning as the addition would be for the current homeowners, I feel I must express some serious concerns regarding the reduction in side yard setback. Originally, the lot line started as a row of red cedar trees. Uh, we were told by the current homeowner that they were instructed to be removed by the insurance company due to a fire hazard. Uh, there's now currently a row of smaller arborvitae trees in its place, because I know you wanted some more real estate. Assuming they were left to grow to as little as half of their full size, the egress of the back of the property would reduce by four feet, leaving only, only two feet, one inches to get to the back there in, in the event of a fire. According to the proposed plan, there would be an outdoor kitchen in the back of the addition, which you mentioned earlier. It would be, we're okay the farthest away from the road, through a, through a very limited access. Also, the outdoor kitchen is, somebody mentioned the, um, outdoor kitchen being very close to the septic tank. Now, I, I, now, this seems a little far-fetched, but I know that, you know, private sewer, because it's a private sewer functions on anaerobic digestion, and knowing that it could put off methane that might be, of course, you, you would use your outdoor kitchen more in July and August. You know, you could have a problem with that. Uh, another one is, clips the septic, uh, you know, uh, oh, the combination, uh, when Steve Barconi, okay. I'll, I'll, I'll bring my own example, because we had to go through a lot of loopholes here in Sandwich to, to go, get our bylaws through in order to build our house in forty-nine Dillingham Avenue. Now, in forty-nine, when Steve Barconi built it, I don't know if you guys know Steve Barconi, when he built forty-nine Dillingham, where we live now, the side yard setback was eight feet from the property line. If this addition is built, it would place the wall of the addition fourteen-point-one feet away from the eastern wall of our house, which would be six feet shorter than would be, um, the twenty feet required today if it were ten feet on either side. So you've got, you've got that issue to deal with, even, you know, provided he didn't put in the, um, the outdoor kitchen, there still would be about nine feet of a very close tolerance, you know, in, in the event something, you know, in the event something should happen and they needed to get access down that way. So that, that was, that was my main concern. I have a couple of photos, some aerial photos of before and after, uh, to basically kind of, I also, a proposal, I think you might already have that, to kind of fully explain in granted detail as to the before and after, as to why they were cut down in the first place. You know, what you did is his expense, you know, I mean, you know, uh, getting credit where credit is due. But I mean, this, this was, this was the image before, uh, of where the cedar trees were, and it was ordered to take them down, rightfully so, to protect both our properties, which would make sense. And then, this is the after here, this is, this is, this is where it is right now as, as we speak. So, I mean, I looked up the arborvitae's and the growth pattern of our arborvitae, they said they would cut them back, I mean, God bless them, I, I hope they do. Because the thing is, if they cut, if they go back to four feet around, since they had to go four feet diameter, they're not going to make it past there. I mean, you, you're talking about a four-feet, uh, uh, encroachment over here into addition to the trees that would most likely have to be removed if anybody had to get back there, you know, for, um, safety reasons, basically. So that, that was basically my main concern about the, the, the fire egress, and the fact that it changed that much, I mean, I, I've got other ones, I mean, this was only to do with the allotment, as far as the septic system was concerned, you know, I, I had, when we built our house in nineteen ninety-eight, we had to be a minimum of ten feet from the, uh, foundation. So, so we had to be a minimum of ten feet from the foundation, then we had to build our septic tank, because it was, that was a minimum standard, you know, it can't be less than that, because, because you could have effluent backing up into the actual house itself. You've got that, and the other thing too is, uh, of course, you know, we're looking at the septic system now as of two thousand seven. Now, you know, in Tom's fantasy, I, I only say this to, to give him a fair warning, is that, you know, it's funny, my mother, she actually remembered when they put it in, and she said, uh, they dug halfway down to China. Now, because they wanted to hit sand, I remember, because you guys have bylaw, where you have to go down clay until you hit sand? Anyways, he had to do the exact same thing that we did. And knowing the size of our leaching, our leaching field takes up pretty much our entire front yard. So with, with that being said, when you have the leaching field taking up the entire front yard, you have the septic system here, you have, now, of course, if you look at the proposed plan, most of the water is actually going to the back of his yard. Uh, I can show you the, oh yeah, here we go, side elevation there of the proposed addition. Here, back here. Most of that, most of that rainwater is going to the back of his yard, and my own, my only concern for his own sake is that the, the, the water will go back there and it'll prevent, now, something was called, I think, I mean, forgive me if I don't know this quite right, but it's called a vapour transpiration. And what happens is, if you've got a lot of rainwater that's ending up in your leaching field, eventually your leaching field will back up. And if you have a backup and you're talking private sewer, uh, you might have a problem there. So I'm like, so basically, this is, this is, this is less of a, a confrontation and more of a warning. Is that when you're dealing with a private sewer, it's such a small lot. You have, you know, getting that evaporate transfer and making sure there's nothing over the leaching field is another thing too. And the thing is, like, that the old leaching field was so small, I mean, it was only about twenty-five by thirteen feet. It had, it had been replaced, but there's no record up at the town hall. So my, my main concern is, I mean, would be the fire egress and what have you, but the other half of the concern is the sewage actually backing up because the septic system had been changed by the previous owner, which I think his name is Jim, had previously installed it, so I, I, I guess, it's multifaceted concern more than anything. But, I mean, the fire code would be number one, because I mean, I think eight feet is already tight, even when we ascribed to that rule in nineteen ninety-eight. So to say, to have it come even closer would be more of a challenge, and, and the other thing too is, you know, we live, we do live there full-time. Now, I don't know if Tom lives at full-time, I don't think he does, I, but, but, that's, regardless of what that happens to be, you know, there would be somebody there, you know, I know with house insurance, uh, I only know this because I cleaned up my, my aunt's, uh, place in Eastbridge one or not so long ago. She had, the, the house insurance was tripled because it hadn't been unoccupied. So there's always that, uh, potential that there could be more problems for the owner himself and for us in, in the event of, of, of close adjacent, um, uh, close adjacent, uh, buildings, uh, kitchen fire and that kind of thing, so. Now, though, I, I voice, so I, I just, I just wanted to voice my concern about the, the entire project, basically. I, I, I want, I want them to have the things they want, but unfortunately, I want them to do it safe, and I don't want them to, to waste money going into a septic system that has been changed and basically hit, hit a tank and have this thing break off, so.
Sir, just, just to clear, clarify if I may, Mr. Jim, um, are you saying the houses are eight feet apart right now? Did I understand that right?
Well, you know, the, right, currently right now, now, right now is feet, our house is eight feet from the property line, but then it would be additional six feet.
Okay.
Additional, but so it would be only, it would be fourteen-point-one feet. Unfortunately, so.
All right, well, thank you very much.
My pleasure, thank you.
Is that on the record?
Oh, yeah, I, I was supposed to bring some of these for the record, the, um, the.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak to this special permit? Okay. Gentlemen, how would you wish to proceed?
Moving forward, Mr. Jim.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, special permit number twenty-five dash fifteen, one forty-one, six A, suite number three, special permit only for the purpose of the medical office practice. The evening sandwich board appeals will hold a public hearing in the application of Dr. Mary Ann Coney, applicant in All-Kay Property LLC, property owner, for a special permit under section twenty-two-hundred of the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaws. The property located at one forty-one, six A, suite three, Sandwich, Mass. Assessors map seventy-three, parcel number seventy-two, for the purpose of the medical office practice. The public hearing will be held on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at the Sandfield School Community Center sixteen D U F, Sandwich, Mass, at six o'clock. Public hearing information can be viewed at the planning and development office. Okay, comment letters. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, first comment letter is from Ian Reed, Building Commissioner. On September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, an application was made for a special permit under the town of Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaws, section thirteen-thirty for a property at one forty-one, six A, suite three. The property is located in the Village Business District. The applicant is proposing a medical office with no surgical procedures. There is no history of a medical office of this nature being in operation at this address in the past five years. For section twenty-two-ten of the town of Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaws, this would require a special permit. The Engineering Department, it is recommended that the applicant, applicant demonstrates that the facility provides adequate off-street parking in accordance with section thirty-one-hundred of the zoning bylaw. That from Sam Jensen. From Heather Blunt, Health Department, the septic designer slash engineer would have to certify that the existing septic system is adequate for the proposed and existing uses combined, and that it does not exceed the approved design flow for the property. All medical waste generated would have to be managed in accordance with all local, state, and federal regulations. Sandwich Fire Department, Andrew Mandel, has no comment at this time. Jenna Silver, Department of Natural Resources. Conservation Commissioner comments on twenty-five dash fifteen are as follows. It appears this project is not within the jurisdiction of the commission and of the Wetlands Protection Act and the town of Sandwich Wetlands bylaw. And that's it for comment letters. Ian, Ian, any comment from either of you?
Pretty straightforward use, and it's in our village district, it's a special permit use, the first one is a medical use for, um, pediatrics. And they were currently located over on Route one thirty, and they would be moving, um, this is standard office building.
Ian, anything from you? And the applicants, please.
I'm Jake Dewey, resident of Hyannis, I'm the owner and manager of All-Kay Property LLC, here to just help try to get the tenant into place. Jeff is here, representing Course Realty Advisors, he was the broker, uh, helping get, um, Dr. Coney into the space. I think it's a less intensive use than what has been previously there. Happy to answer any questions to hopefully get it approved so she can move over.
How about the comment on off-street parking, besides, it appears to be a pretty big parking lot.
Yeah, we have 18 spaces existing, and so I guess I would sort of lean on your, you know, others individually determined section of your parking requirements. The multi-tenant nature of the building, no one is a full nine-to-five operation, it's very much a coming-and-going situation. We've got some other sort of personal services type things going on there that are, you know, one customer, one employee at a time. And Dr. Koenig has said that she would never have more than two employees and never has more than two clients there at a time, so I would suggest that the parking intensity will probably actually be less than what's there currently.
The unit she currently occupies, or the unit she's looking to occupy is probably about 450 square feet, so it's a very small unit. By the time bylaws, it would be just over two parking spaces that are required. And the current tenant there is utilizing almost all, like, the only time I've ever seen it full, that tenant's had 10 trucks out there, so we're...
The tenant that's vacating.
Yeah, that's vacant, so it's definitely an improvement in the parking.
That tenant is leaving.
They're leaving, and Dr. Koenig would like to take that space.
All right. Any members of the board have any, any members of the board have any questions for the applicant? Please, I can speak forward.
Just one, and maybe it's for the, is there any hazardous material or anything?
As the, Dr. Koenig can answer to, but as the Department of Health had said, that she'd be required to file with the state for disposal based on state guidelines or state law, and she filed that with the town. That would be part of her business licensing with the town for her disposal, but she's not performing any surgical or anything like that.
Got you. Anybody from the public wish to speak to the special department? Okay, I'll take a motion to close and take it under advisement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're good to go. All right. All right, the next one is pretty much done. Number 25-16, 141 Route 6A, Suite Number 7, special permit, permit for the purpose of a medical office practice. Sandwich Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on the application of Hillary Rek R, in All Cave Property LLC, property owner, for a special permit under Section 2200 of the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw, for property located at 141 Route 6A, Suite 7, Sandwich, Mass. Assessors Map Number 73, parcel number 72, for the purpose of a medical office practice. The public hearing will be held on October 14, 2025, at the Sand Hill Community Center, 16 D U F, Sandwich, Mass, at 6:00 p.m. Public information can be viewed at the planning and development office.
Motion open, 25-16.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jim. First comment letter is from Ian Reed, building commissioner. On September 23, 2025, an application was made for a special permit under the Town of Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaws, Section 1330, for a property at 141 Route 6A, Suite 7. The property is located in the Village Business District. The applicant is proposing a medical office with no surgical procedures. There is no history of a medical office of this nature being in operation at this address in the past five years, as per Section 2210 of the Town of Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaws, so requires a special permit. All right, engineering department, Sam Jensen, is recommended that the applicant demonstrate that the facility provides adequate off-street parking in performance with Section 3100 of the zoning bylaw. From Heather Galant, health department, septic designer slash engineer would have to certify that this existing septic system is adequate for the proposed and existing uses combined, and that it does not exceed the approved design flow for the property. All medical waste generated would have to be managed in accordance with all local, state, and federal regulations. Jenna Silver, conservation department, conservation commission, comments, it appears that this project is not within the jurisdiction of the commission under the Wetlands Protection Act and the Town of Sandwich Wetlands bylaw. And that's it for comment letters. Ian, Ian, any comment?
Very similar use to the previous one, this time it is a medical office related cosmetic procedures, injectable things of that nature, I don't believe there's any cosmetic tattooing involved with it, so pretty much straightforward use.
Ian?
Sam is the comment.
All right, sir, you're up again.
Again, Jake Dewey, resident of Hyannis, owner of the property, and manager of All Cave Property LLC. Again, similar situation, it's, we fall into a medical use, the applicant would like to, or the proposed tenant would like to move in there and use this space. From what I understand, it's a very similar, it's a generally a one-to-one, one employee, one customer situation, so I don't think we'll have a parking issue. And then just answer to the septic issue, once we know that these two tenants are in here, we'll get the letter submitted to the town so we can finalize, we just want to make sure that these were the two, instead of doing it for different tenants actually. And Jeff is here from Corsh Realty Advisors, if there's other questions about the proposed tenant.
Same, similar, 40 square feet.
Actually, smaller, so it's only, I think, 317 or 320 square feet. Second story, it's more in-and-out business by appointment, so it's going to be, there's two owners, they're both nurses, and just, you know, they're the only two that work there, they meet patients and give them a set of treatments.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? And there's nobody here from the public, note that, so we don't have anyone speaking from the public.
Motion closed, application 25-16.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're good to go, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you all for your time, and you're going to the town, thank you.
There is no open items for board discussion. Do we want to deliberate tonight, or what do we want to do?
Yeah, let's do it. Shouldn't take long.
Okay, let me just excuse myself for a minute.
You have one minute.
Okay.
Come on, can we do it?
No.
Yes.
Sorry, I was just kidding.
We thought, yes. There we go. I did, I did. What was the setting?
Trust me, you have one. So the board knows we have three additional filings for next week's, two weeks, the meeting on 28th, three new filings.
Two or three?
Three.
Really? Can you tell the two's on it?
The board of appeals has been busy.
Motion ended the end of the year?
Yeah.
Total of three, or three in addition to...
Total of three, and then the...
Obviously.
And then the 110, Mr. Club, which we should have a decision.
Now, will we close the public hearing, or no, still?
Eric didn't remember that either.
Should I ask it? All right, gentlemen.
All right, so this procedural history, this is the application from Sections 1330, 2420, of the zoning bylaw for property located at 51 Dillingham Avenue, which was filed on September 23, 2025, and revised on September 29, 2025. After proper notice was given, the public hearing was opened on October 14, it closed on October 14, 2025. Application was accompanied by a site plan entitled "Existing Conditions" and prepared for Thomas Cullenane in Sandwich, Mass, prepared by Richard J. Hood, dated January 6, 2024, revised May 30, 2025. The board reviewed the application, all of the materials submitted prior to the close of the public hearing, the board received, gave due consideration to the testimony given at the public hearing, all the members attended the public hearing, Neve, Ontario, Killian, Vanbusker, and rise. Findings, board finds that the application meets requirements of Section 9 Mass General Law, Chapter 48. Subject property is located within the Yar One zoning district. Subject property does not fall within the regulated floodplain as currently mapped. The applicant wishes to modify an existing non-conforming on-slab structure by constructing in addition to improve access to the interior of the building, raise the roofline to increase living area, and other changes to accommodate new outdoor amenities. The proposed construction increases the non-conforming nature of the structure by 47%. The extension and alteration of the pre-existing non-conforming structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. The Section 1330 requirements, board find, does not find that there are conditions peculiar to this case, but not generally true for similar permitted uses on other sites in the same district. Board finds that nuisance, hazard, or congestion will not be created. Board finds that there will not be substantial harm to the neighborhood. The board finds that there is no derogation from the intent of the bylaw, such that the district's objectives will be satisfied. Any further findings? Does anyone want to mention these changes in the side yard, side yard setbacks, or... All right, so I will make a motion on the findings.
I was confused, I thought he was saying that we changed that at one time, it's still
Motion to approve, as written.
six and eight under 50.
I don't think he was right, it's been six and eight for, which is basically 10% of
Chris, this is where you come in.
Second.
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 the foot frontage is over six and eight.
All in favor?
All in favor, here we go. All right.
Under 100 feet.
Sorry.
Okay. Yeah. A lot of seniors here. Okay, do you care to make a finding that complies with that, or you do want to make Let's see, conditions, at the public hearing, the board appeals, consider potential conditions of approval for the special permit. The board voted that the following conditions of approval shall be imposed on any approval of a special permit, that these conditions are reasonable, and that the applicant and its successor in interest should be bound by the conditions, failure to comply with a finding? all the conditions set forth in the decision shall terminate the grant of the special Okay. permit. What's that? Pursuant to the requirement of Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaws, Section 1330, the grant of
25-50.
this special permit shall expire upon transfer of ownership prior to initiation of substantial Is that six and eight? construction on or occupancy of the site unless such transfer is authorized in this permit, or if no substantial construction or occupancy takes place within three years of a special permit, excluding such time required to pursue or await determination of an appeal referred to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 17.
Yeah.
Special permit should not take effect until it's recorded at the municipal county registry
25-50, B.
of deeds and a copy of the recorded special permit provided to the board of appeals. B. Erosion control shall be implemented throughout the construction period. We're going to add, lock coverage should not exceed 25%. Okay, anything else?
No.
I'll move to approve, conditions as written.
Second, those conditions.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, the decision, after reviewing the application, the plan, and all of the materials submitted, and after giving due consideration to testimony given at the public hearing, the board hereby approves the special permit for property located at 51 Dillingham Avenue, as shown in Assessors Map 88, parcel 133, for the purpose of increasing a non-conforming nature of the structure by over 30%. I will move to approve the special permit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay. This is 25-15, this is the application, this is 141 Route 6A, Unit Number 3. The application for a special permit, which was filed on September 23, 2025, under Section 1330 of the bylaw for the purpose of operating a pediatric medical office at property located 141 Route 6A, Unit Number 3. After proper notice was given, the public hearing was opened on October 14, 2025, and closed on October 14, 2025. The application was accompanied by a subsurface sewage disposal inspection form referencing a sketch of a sewage disposal system entitled "Site Plan," dated February 1960. Read the application and all of the materials submitted prior to the close of the public hearing, the board received, gave due consideration to the testimony given at the public hearing. All the members attended, Neve, Ontario, Killian, Vanbusker, gave rise. Findings, board finds that the application meets requirements of Section 9 Mass General Law, Chapter 48. Subject property is located within the Village zoning district. Building consists of approximately 13,504 square feet, with 180 feet frontage on Route 6A. Building is currently being used as a professional office space with multiple business tenants. Subject Unit Number 3 was previously used as office space. Petition for a special permit requests approval for a change in use as regulated by the zoning bylaw for a professional office to medical office. Section 1330 requirements, board does not find that there are conditions peculiar to this case, but not generally true for similar permitted uses on other sites in the same district. The board finds that the nuisance, hazard, or congestion will not be created. Board finds that there will not be substantial harm to the neighborhood. Board finds that there is no derogation from the intent of the bylaw, such that the district's objectives will be satisfied. The board finds that special permit number 72-03 approved the current use of professional office space in the Village Zone. The applicant does not anticipate any changes to the exterior of the building. Traffic circulation, parking, landscaping, lighting are to remain the same. The applicant states that office, typical office hours are from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Thursdays. The applicant states that no more than two employees shall work on-site, and that the maximum of two patients will be on-site at any one time. The board finds that there is adequate parking on-site to accommodate change of use as described. Didn't realize we talked about ours, but glad we did. Okay, any other findings? I will move said findings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Let's see, conditions, at the public hearing, the board considered potential conditions of approval for a special permit amendment. The board appeals voted to, voted that the following conditions of approval shall be imposed upon any approval of a special permit, that these conditions are reasonable, and that the applicant and its successor in interest shall be bound by these conditions. So this isn't an amendment, right? This is a special permit? Just knock that out of there. Okay, number one, failure to comply with the conditions set forth in this decision shall terminate the grant of the special permit. Pursuant to the requirements of Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaws, Section 1330, the grant of this special permit shall expire upon transfer of ownership prior to initiation of substantial construction on or occupancy of the site unless such transfer is authorized in the special permit, or if no substantial construction or occupancy takes place within 12 months of a special permit. Approval excluding such time required to pursue or await determination of an appeal.
Just to attract you there, 12 months is three years. That's old. If no substantial construction or occupancy takes place within three years, is the bylaw. 12 months is the previous bylaw.
Okay, so you got that. Read this enough times, you should know that. Was the last one like that too?
No, that, just checked it, correct, three years. It's already an old template that was called for the decision.
Okay, so no substantial construction or occupancy takes place within three years of the special permit approval, excluding such time required to pursue or await determination of an appeal referred to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 17. Special permit should not take effect if it's recorded at the municipal county registry of deeds, copy of the recorded special permit is provided to the board of appeals. The applicant shall will make the appropriate submittals to the DEP regarding tight tank, and they will maintain a manifest in pumping data based on available, database available in the Sandwich Health Department upon request. Anything further on conditions? I don't think we have anything. Okay, I will move those conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So, after this, a decision after reviewing the application, the plan, and all of the materials submitted, and after giving due consideration to testimony given at the public hearing, the board hereby approves the special permit for property located at 141 Route 6A, Unit 3, as shown in the Assessors Map 73... ............................................................................................................................................................................................................ Subject unit number three was previously used as office space. Petition for a special permit requests approval for a change in use as regulated by the zoning bylaw for professional office to medical office. Section thirteen thirty requirements, the board does not find that there are conditions peculiar to this case but not generally true for similar permitted uses on other sites in the same district. The board finds that the nuisance, hazard, or congestion will not be created. The board finds that there will not be substantial harm to the neighborhood. The board finds that there is no derogation from the intent of the bylaw, such that the district's objectives will be satisfied. The board finds that special permit number seventy-two dash oh three approved the current use of professional office space in the Village Zone. The applicant does not anticipate any changes to the exterior of the building. Traffic circulation, parking, landscaping, lighting are to remain the same. The applicant states that office, typical office hours are from ten a.m. to five p.m. on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and two p.m. to seven p.m. on Thursdays. The applicant states that no more than two employees shall work on-site, and that the maximum of two patients will be on-site at any one time. The board finds that there is adequate parking on-site to accommodate change of use as described. Didn't realize we talked about hours, but glad we did. Okay, any other findings? I will move said findings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, conditions, at the public hearing, the board considered potential conditions of approval for special permit amendment. The board appeals voted to, voted that the following conditions of approval shall be imposed upon any approval of a special permit, that these conditions are reasonable, and that the applicant and its successor in interest shall be bound by these conditions. So this isn't an amendment, right? This is a special permit? Okay, okay, number one, failure to comply with the conditions set forth in this decision shall terminate the grant of the special permit, pursuant to the requirements of Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw, section thirteen thirty, the grant of the special permit shall expire upon transfer of ownership prior to initiation of substantial construction on or occupancy of the site unless such transfer is authorized in the special permit, or if no substantial construction or occupancy takes place within twelve months of a special permit. Approval excluding such time required to pursue or await determination of an appeal, of an appeal.
Just to interrupt you there, twelve months is three years. That's old. If no substantial construction or occupancy takes place within three years is the bylaw. Twelve months is the previous bylaw.
Okay, so you can't say that. That's why I read this enough time, you should know that. Was the last one like that, too?
No, that just checked his bracket, three years. It's already an old template that was called for the decision.
Okay, so no substantial construction or occupancy takes place within three years of the special permit approval, excluding such time required to pursue or await determination of an appeal referred to Mass. General Law, chapter forty-eight, section seventeen. Special permit should not take effect until it's recorded at the municipal county registry of deeds, copy of the recorded special permit is provided to the board of appeals. The applicant shall will make the appropriate submittals to the DEP regarding tight tank, and they will maintain a manifest in pumping database on avail, base, database available in the Sandwich Health Department upon request. Anything further on conditions? I don't think we have anything. I will move those conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, after this, a decision after reviewing the application, the plan, and all of the materials submitted, and after giving due consideration to testimony given at the public hearing, the board hereby approves the special permit for property located at one forty-one, Route six A, unit three, as shown in the assessment map seventy-three, parcel zero seven two, for the purpose of operating a pediatric medical office. I will move to approve this special permit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See, this is now number seven, is the application for a special permit, which is filed on September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, under section thirteen thirty, and twenty-two hundred of the bylaws for the purpose of operating a medical office that would offer cosmetic services on property located at one forty-one, Route six A, Suite number seven, in Sandwich. After proper notice was given, the public hearing was open on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and closed on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The application was accompanied by a subsurface sewage disposal inspection form referencing a sketch of a sewer disposal system entitled Site Plan, dated February nineteen sixty. The board reviewed the application, all of the materials submitted prior to the close of the public hearing. The board received and gave due consideration to the testimony given at the public hearing, following members attended, Neve, Ontario, Killian, Van Busker, and Brides. Findings, the board of appeals finds that the application meets requirements of section nine, Mass. General Law, chapter forty-eight. Subject property is located within the Village zoning district. Building consists of approximately thirteen thousand five hundred four square feet with more than a hundred and eighty feet of frontage on Route six A. The building is currently being used as a professional office space with multiple business tenants. Subject unit number seven was previously used as office space. Petition for a special permit requests approval for a change in use as regulated by the zoning bylaw for from professional office to medical office. Section thirteen thirty requirements, board of appeals does not find that there are conditions peculiar to this gate but not generally true for similar permitted uses on other sites in the same district. The board finds that nuisance, hazard, or congestion will not be created. The board finds that there will not be substantial harm to the neighborhood, and the board finds that there is no derogation from the intent of the bylaw, such that the district's objectives will be satisfied. The board finds that special permit number seventy-two dash oh three approved the current use of professional office space in the Village Zone. Board notes that the applicant does not anticipate any changes to the exterior of the building, it expects that traffic, circulation, parking, landscaping, lighting will remain the same. The applicant states that the hours of operation are a day-to-day basis, Sunday through Saturday, falling between nine a.m. and five p.m. The applicant states that no more than two employees shall work in the site, serving no more than two clients per appointment. Board finds that there is adequate parking on-site to accommodate the change in use as described. Assume there are no more findings. I will move the findings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In conditions, at the public hearing, the board considered potential conditions of approval for the special permit amendment. The board... Board of appeals voted that the following conditions of the approval shall be imposed upon any approval of a special permit, and that these conditions are reasonable, and that the applicant and its successor in interest should be bound by the conditions. Failure to comply with these, all these conditions set forth in the decision shall terminate the grant of the special permit, pursuant to the requirements of the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw, section thirteen thirty, the grant of the special permit shall expire upon transfer of ownership prior to initiation of substantial construction on or occupancy of the site unless such transfer is authorized in the special permit, or if no substantial construction or occupancy takes place within three years of a special permit approval, excluding such time required to pursue or await determination of an appeal referred to Mass. General Law, chapter forty-eight, section seventeen. Special permit should not take effect until it's recorded at the municipal county registry of deeds and a copy of the recorded special permit provided to the board of appeals. The applicant will make the appropriate submittals to DEP regarding tight tank, and they will maintain a manifest in pumping database available to the Sandwich Health Department upon requests. No further conditions? I will move the conditions. Dewey? Or you want to add something?
I didn't really, are they putting a tight tank in?
I think there's one existing.
Oh.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Okay, after reviewing the application, the plan, and all of the materials submitted, and after giving due consideration of testimony given at the public hearing, the board hereby approves the special permit for a property located at one forty-one, Route six A, unit seven, as shown in assessment map, section thirty, parcel seventy-two, for the purpose of operating a medical office that would offer cosmetic services. I move to approve the special permit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have nothing else to discuss this evening, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll see you in a couple weeks, gentlemen. Thanks. What?
I have your sign.
I can't hear you.
I have your sign. You do?